Stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. I'll call this regular school board of meetings for independent schools district 544 to order. Beginning with the establishment of our quorum. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Kelly Graff.
Here.
Jenny Christensen.
Present.
Missy Hermes.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Steven Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we'll put forth a resolution for acknowledgements. A thank you to Otter Elementary PTO for their donation to Ms. Kinraid's Classroom Library at Cleveland. Thank you to BW Integrated Systems for their donation of steel to the welding program at Fergus Falls Public Schools. And a thank you to Lakes Country Service Cooperative for their generous donation of an enclosed trailer to the Fergus Falls CTE program at Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption? I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption. And is there a second?
Second.
Just a quick discussion, CTE program stands?
Career and tech kit.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right, will you take role?
Yes.
Kelly Graff.
Yes.
Jenny Christensen.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Hermes Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. We have board reports, and we will begin with Kirby Anderson and his extra activities.
Okay, the finance committee has not met since our last report, and the 544 Education Foundation also has not met since our last report. We will have a meeting this Thursday at noon for the 544 Education Foundation.
All right. Jenny Christensen.
The activities committee has not met, and I am no longer the Minnesota State High School lead representative. That is now Kelly Graff, so she will give the report.
Jenny, would you mind giving it if you attended it, though?
You don't attend it. That's why I sent you the minutes.
Okay, I thought there was a meeting, so.
Yeah, it's in the cities, and they don't do it remotely.
They don't?
So that's why I sent the minutes and told you you'd need to go through it and then report on it for the next meeting.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought there was a meeting.
Nope, I mean, yeah, there's a meeting, but we don't attend it. We just get the minutes, and then we report on your minutes.
Oh, okay, thank you for the clarification. All right. And then we'll just keep going down line. My board reports include meet confer, which has not met. But Region One had our monthly meeting and just reviewed the additional schools going on to the smart systems. And it's a consistent addition of schools that are integrated into that. There is a synergy support conference set up for October 29th and 30th. That's intended for support staff to understand the many wonderful ways you can use synergy. The audit's underway, and that is really the end of most of significant things going on there. Any questions? We'll move on to Kelly. The staff development has not met, nor the wellness. All right, thank you. Missy Hermes.
Okay, curriculum review committee will meet in October when school gets started up again. And policy committee, you've heard me report now for the last probably three times, so I don't have anything new other than those policies that are... That I know the administrators are working on a policy that we've asked them to look into, and that the other 30 policies are being updated and added to the website.
If I could make a note, I have been running into teachers just in my daily life around town and have been receiving a lot of really positive feedback about the school dress code. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
Most of them seem to be happy with it, so.
Very nice. All right, all right. Good feedback. Feels good, doesn't it?
Yeah, no, it was like, they're like, so the dress code, I'm like, I brace myself, and they're like, I'm really happy, and I'm like, good, that's great to hear, thanks.
Steven Vigasa.
The linear grounds is not bad.
All right, and we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to start out with a congratulatory note to the class of 65. And so I had an opportunity to spend a little time with them on Saturday afternoon. They wanted to go in and see the old gym. And then they had their class reunion banquet at the Bigwood Event Center on Saturday evening. And I had a chance to speak at that event and get to know some of the folks there, listen to their stories, and really a very nice evening. They have to be, in our history, one of the largest graduating classes. I think they said at one time they had 305 students in their class, and they graduated, I believe, 298. So it was a wonderful evening for them to kind of reminisce and catch up on old friendships. I want to go through district goals, and I altered this just a little bit from our discussion at the board retreat. I had tried to figure out a way to do number four and number five as a single goal, and I just didn't find a way to do it in a way that made sense to me. But we'll go up and start with goal number one. Otter preschool students will meet all kindergarten readiness goals. So we keep increasing this. It was 40% last year. We're upping that to 50% this year. That will be considered school-ready. And just as a reminder to the community, we assess our progress on this goal based on the kindergarten staff assessments of those kids that take place in September. So we'll get the results of last year's goal actually towards the end of the first month of school. District goal number two, achieving grade level literacy for all students. Again, we've increased our percentage, asking for a 10% increase over our 2025 goals. This is ongoing, and we've had a focus on increasing our student achievement in literacy now for about three years. It used to be that we were focused on just grade three, but we changed that goal to be essentially pre-K through 12. District goal number three, improve student average daily attendance. This goal is asking for an improvement over last year. Our target's 95%, but we... I'll go through our results from this past year, and you'll see that we did not hit that in all cases. We didn't hit it in any cases, but we're looking for improvement there. So I'll go over that data in just a second. District goal number four, customer service. 95% positive satisfaction rating is assessed by an end-of-the-year survey. So that can go to both our staff and our Otter families. We can even talk about sending a survey out to our students as well. And so we will look for the school board, administration, et cetera, to play a part in developing what those survey instruments might look like that we'll use in the spring. And then, so I split off district number... Our goal number five, which is marketing. And there's two goals on there. One is what I'm going to say, our capture rate. So improving our capture rate of eligible incoming kindergarten students by 10%. And then also decreasing the percentage of students that are eligible to attend Fergus Falls schools but choose to be educated in some other manner, whether it's going to a different district, going to a private school, going to... Being homeschooled, decreasing the percentage of students we lose to other enrollment by 10% through our marketing efforts. So any questions about the goals this morning?
No. Thank you for your work on that.
Yep, you're very welcome. So now we're going to talk about the progress that we made last year with our attendance goal. This was one of our big initiatives, really, was putting Lynn Johnson in a position where she had a full-time job just focusing on improving our districts' attendance rates. And so as you look at the data, we have four categories per grade level. Perfect attendance, zero absences. We have our target rate, which is 95 to just under perfect attendance. So that's where we really want that band to be, in the first two or above. We have 90 to 90, just under 95%, and then we have lower than 90% attendance. And that's really... In my opinion, those last two categories really are not acceptable when you're missing essentially 10-plus double digits of attendance every year. That is a lot of time missed out of the classroom. So to make this easy to just do as a quick glance, what I did is I... When I went through the data is if we made improvements in an area, for the most part, those will be reflected under our 24-25 data as a green cell compared to the prior year. And if we went backwards, then I categorized that as a red cell. And there's a little bit of explanation because of how populations move from cell to cell that I'll have to provide on some of the data. But you can see in our lowest two grades, that was all great news. Our top two categories were increasing, and our bottom categories, where we don't want kids to be, were decreasing. The same is true in second grade. Essentially, well, we stayed the same in perfect attendance, but we had improvements in the other categories, either by category two going up and the other two where we don't want students to be going down. You'll see in the third grade students, you see an uptick in... But I still consider this to be a positive, and I'll tell you why. I quoted the 90% to 95% as a positive. And I did that because our lowest group went down significantly. So we basically moved a bunch of those kids up one slot above, which I consider to be nice progress there. Then when we move into fourth grade, we took a dip in that 95 to just under perfect attendance. So that's something that we'll have to take a look at. On the positive side, we reduced by 4% the number of students that were missing 18-plus days of school. So that was good. And that was pretty significant, from 33 students the year before down to 22. So that's a nice move there. Onto fifth grade. Every category had an improvement from the year before, so that's really good results to see there. Sixth grade, perfect attendance was the same, but the other categories, again, showed improvement. And then we start into the junior high and high school where the results will be a little bit more mixed. In seventh grade, we had 51% in the prior year that had 95% attendance or better. That's a pretty significant drop down to 40% last year. And we have embargoed still the... We're under an embargo, the MCA scores. But our seventh graders struggled on the MCAs last year. And I always... One of the first things I always look at is attendance, because if you're not in school, that has a direct correlation, both in passing classes but on test results and et cetera. One piece of good news out of that group is that the number of students was only by two, but the number of students missing 18 or more days did decrease slightly. Then moving on to eighth grade, their results really were not a whole lot different than they were the year before. We did have a slight increase by a single student, the number of kids that missed 18 days or more in eighth grade. Ninth grade, we had a slight increase by two students in perfect attendance. We did have a nice dip, though, from 41 down to 35 in the number of students that missed 18 days or more. So that was good to see. But then, as we move into the very upper grades, we see that our 10th graders basically had a reduction in every area. We were down by 8%. Significant number of students, as you look at the cell numbers, that were 95% or greater. And we also had six more students that ended up with 18 days or more absent last year. As we move into 11th grade, again, a pretty significant drop in the number of students that hit our target of 95% or more, from 74 down to 65. And then we also had a marked increase in the number of students with 18-plus days of absence. 23 in the prior school year, and last year that jumped up to 40. And then moving on to the 12th graders, a slight dip in the target attendance at 95% or more. In a percentage-wise, a very slight improvement in terms of lower than 89.99%. As we move into the ALC, just some tough data for the district last year at the ALC and some things we'll have to have some conversations about at the start of the school year. As you look at ninth grade ALC, there's only 10 students in that cell, but you see that 80%... Eight out of 10 of those students missed 18-plus days of school. Moving down to the 10th graders, again, a fairly small number of students at 21, but 15 out of 21 of those kids missed 18-plus days of school, up from 12 the prior year with a similar class size. As you look at the two upper grades, 17 out of 22 missed over 18-plus days in the junior class. And 24 out of 31 of the seniors missed 18 days or more of school. So some work and conversation needs to take place here before the start of the school year to try to improve those numbers. And that's going to have, again, a direct correlation on the students being successful in the classroom. So that's our data from last year on our attendance goal. In a nutshell or synopsis, we saw really good improvements in the lower grades, regular brick and mortar. We saw some slide in the wrong direction on the high school level, and then in particular at the ALC. Any questions about that?
Does this entail, like, sick vacations?
This will be all absences.
So sporting events included in that?
Nope. Sporting events are not quoted as an absence. It's a school activity.
Okay, so just sickness and vacation, then?
Yep, these kids are not in the classroom and not due to a school activity.
Okay, that's what I didn't know, thank you.
Yep, good question. Any other questions on the attendance data?
But it's not... It's... So the excused absences by the parents are...
They would be included in here, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I would say, as a general rule of thumb, it's the... I'm going to label them excessive excused absences that are probably the most common thing that we see. So it's not that kids are quote-unquote skipping school and labeled as truant. It's that they're not coming to school, but the parents are still saying sick at home or what have you.
Do we see more behavioral problems? Is that why the students are not in school? Are they fighting the parents more? Like, do you know exactly why the parents are excusing the students?
Most... I don't, Kelly. I would say most of the time when parents writing an excuse, they're going to say, child's at home sick. Whether that's due to conflict in the home in the morning where the student just refused or what have you. But I can get some better data from the principals that attend the truancy meetings, et cetera. And I don't know, Melanie, you have a lot of experience working with this. If there's anything you wanted to add to that component or not, but...
Not particularly. In the younger grades in particular, it... There are rarely students that have chronic illness. It's a lot of time it's a parenting issue. That's the standard that I've seen when I've worked it, so.
Without violating any privacy, I mean, is it possible to find just aggregate data of the kids that are not attending, you know, the ones that have less than 95% in terms of, you know, academic performance? Or is that too much of a violation of privacy? I don't have any names or anything, but I just... I'm just curious, like, how are these kids that are being...
How's it affect them?
That are sick or, you know, whatever it is that they're out for, however they do an act.
Yeah. That's absolutely possible. So as long as we're using aggregate data, you could look at... We could produce data that would show students that miss 18-plus days of school, what their GPA was and how many classes just failed.
Interesting, yeah. I don't disagree with the idea of being in school makes your grades better. I'm just more out of curiosity, how is that showing up in the actual numbers?
Yeah. The results of that would hopefully be of interest to parents, too, to show them the correlation.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the good questions. Just an announcement for the public. On August 20th, 9 through 12 will have their open house from 4:30 to 7:30 at Fergus Falls High School. Also, on the 20th, there's a ninth grade orientation from 6 to 7. And the... At the... In the auditorium, the ALC is also having its open house from 5 to 8. And then there's a new family meeting that evening at 6 o'clock. August 20th, 7:15 to 8, is 10th through 12th grade new student orientation at the auditorium. And then I mentioned the ALC open house coming up on August 25th, Wednesday. August 27th is the regular open house for elementary grades. There's, excuse me, 5 to 7 p.m., middle school, 5 to 8 p.m. And then Thursday, August 28th, the open house for Otter preschool and ECFV is 5:30 to 7. And I've got to just double-check some of that on there to make sure that that's all lining up. If not, I'll correct it in my radio report tomorrow.
Sorry, the school pictures are also on the 20th, right? Is that right?
School...
Pictures. It's on the...
9 through 12.
For 9 through 12, there's school pictures on the 20th. Do you know why it's before school starts this year, or?
I didn't catch that. Normally, they're always done at the start of school.
Yeah, I know, we just got communication that it was before. I just thought that was odd, so.
I think other schools do that way.
Yeah. So I don't know, it's just...
I wonder if it has to do with the yearbook? Some of the yearbook things that the kids are doing, because other schools do it as well, so.
I don't think the percentage of kids that show up, though, is going to be a lot lower than if you're doing it during the regular school year. So I'll have to get some... I'll have to do some checking on the change and what the plan is for students that don't end up showing up for that. This is a topic that I want to spend a little bit more time with the board during our work session this morning by an opportunity to attend a training last Wednesday in Morris on crisis response. And it was really, really good stuff. Officer Cedarburg was also there. And I think what I heard makes more sense for us in terms of crisis protocol and response than our present system. So essentially, any crisis can be... The response can be framed using one of those five or a combination of those five responses, either hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, or shelter. And then there are essentially posters for every classroom that illustrates the responsibilities and role of the students as well as the adults dealing with the protocol as well. So it's really much less confusing than to go into a code system, like a code red or a code yellow. These words all align with the actions that you're taking. So just, to me, it just makes a lot of sense logically. And then with that, I'll just turn it over to questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. We'll continue with our general consent items. And for approval on this motion will be the minutes from our July 28th regular board meeting. And then bills and treasures report.
All right, so starting with the treasurer's report. And this... For this month, our beginning balance at the beginning of the month was about $25 million, ending a little bit... Kind of just had a little bit of a loss at $22 million. It's $23 million with construction. So we are up about $1.7 million from last year. However, just of note, about $700,000 of that is LTFM funds. So going down by fund, Fund One, we are down about $2 million. Fund Two, down about $32,000. Fund Four, down $37,000. Fund Six, down $13,000. Fund Seven, down $32,000. Most of that was from interest payments that were made this month. Fund Eight, down $2,000. And Fund Twenty-One is the only one that was up a little bit by $2,000. Moving on to our bills for July 29th to August 13th, our total amount of bills for this period was $709,613.71. Out of Fund One, we had about $612,000. Fund Two, about $30,000. Fund Four, $66,000. And Fund Five, $105,000. Of note, 600... Excuse me, $363,000 came out for payroll. So that was about 59% of our general fund bills. $21,000 in transportation. We had a bill for about $10,000 for a repair on the KSS roof. We also had a bill for 200... Or, excuse me, $2,900 for annual turf maintenance. $64,000 from Lakes Area for our ECFE funds. $1,105,000 for our drivers' ed car repairs. I know we are going to speak about that later, too, but I just wanted to make that of note that in this round of bills, we had another $1,000 that we had to dump into that vehicle. And then $26,000 in curriculum. And that's what I have for bills and the treasurer's report.
All right, thank you. Under personnel, we have many hires, as is the norm during this season of the year. Certified staff hires include Caleb Anderson, Anne Hints, Bailey McKinney, Catherine McNeely, Scott Meldel, Monica Peterson, Michael Bear, Wendy Campbell, and Caleb Gleeb. Certified staff resignations, Jennifer Peterson and Lisa Winkler both have resigned. Support staff resignations include Alicia Trakas, Molly McGuire, Sarah McO'Mary, Brittany Johnson, Jody Kidder, Melissa Butler, and Wendy Gale. Support staff hires, Kaylee Alsog, Chastity Purrier, Crystal Knighton, Terry Larson, Madeline Goodwin, and then a coach resignation, Tim Lil, girls head hockey coach. For details about each of the positions, if you're... If someone's interested in where they worked or where they will work, it will be in the minutes. And those are the personnel items. Is there a motion to approve the general consent item?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I noted quite a few of the rehires, our staff that we... I noted quite a few of the rehires, our, our staff that we had laid off, so that's, nice, that's awesome. Alright, with no other discussion, then, all in favor of approving the general consent, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Alright, we have, uh, one, uh, item of unfinished business. Looking for a motion to accept the bid for three thousand fifty-one dollars, uh, for the sale of the two thousand one Chevy twenty-five hundred HD truck with a tommy gate. Would someone offer a motion to accept that bid?
I'll offer that motion.
And a second? Okay Billy, and then, um, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Alright, that is approved. We have a revised contract with Lakewood Mental Health Center for school-based mental health. Um, this is for the practitioner that serves on Lincoln School and, um, is effective August fifteenth through the end of the year. Entertain the motion and then get a quick update. Is there, uh, a motion to approve that contract? So moved, and a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Superintendent, could you just convey that a little bit?
Yes, so, uh, last year, I believe we had twenty hours of support, uh, for Lincoln. Uh, during the course of the year, we had, um, several occasions where the staff, uh, and Principal Steinbrenner had reached out for some additional, uh, hours, uh, but we didn't have it in our budget. And so, over the course of the summer, um, there were some personnel changes out there. And Principal Steinbrenner had approached the district to say, if I don't fill, uh, one of my support sys, uh, positions, uh, in another area, uh, would it be possible to use a portion of those savings to apply to, uh, more mental health support time? And so, uh, to me, um, as long as it fits within our budget, if Principal Steinbrenner believes that putting more resources in this area better serves our students and families than the support position we had before, um, then I would, I am supportive of it, and so that's the request, uh, that's before the board this morning. Uh, it does not, although it increases this contract, it does not cause an increase to the budget out at Lincoln. Um, it's, it's being absorbed by the, not filling that other position.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Alright, on to new business, um, we have some, the student handbook available for review. And is there a motion to approve that? So moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the handbook? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Um, looking for a motion to approve the district goals, which were reviewed by the superintendent during his presentation. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor of approving the district goals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Alright, next, um, motion, and maybe we could, uh, round this out just a bit more. Um, prior to taking the motion, approve the purchase of a vehicle for driver's ed and, um, should specify which bid and for how much. Do you have that? I, I'm sorry that I didn't-
Oh, I did not get that in.
In the packet?
It is in the packet.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I printed it off, I have it.
There's one from Sub Motor, one for Quality. Um, twenty-four, two eighty-four from Sub Motors, twenty-three, five oh three for Toyota. They're relatively close.
Do you want to make a motion before we discuss it?
Well, um, I suppose we could, um-
Oh, you want to make specifics here before?
Yeah, we don't have at hand which one our business manager endorsed, do we?
No, and I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure she made a recommendation on it. The, the cost of both cars is, the difference is minimal. And because they're two different models, you can't really do it exact apples to apples. Both of these vehicles met the specs of the, um, request for quotes. And I would say, uh, both of these vehicles would serve the needs of the program, uh, well. And so, uh, it comes down to, uh, you know, some other things like the, uh, features or accessories of the car, is, uh, fuel economy, a matter of importance to the district, et cetera. Uh, one thing, uh, that could potentially be done is, um, would maybe be a little unusual, uh, but if the board was fine with either vehicle, it would be nice if some of the drivers and teachers would have time to get out and test drive and, and get their feedback. The bid process didn't really, from a times, timing standpoint, allow for that to take place, so.
Um, would there be merit in entertaining a motion to table it, or is, uh?
Problem with that is that they canceled all drivers, um, behind the wheel because they're waiting on this.
Okay.
That's the problem, so. And there's a lot of kids that need to get some hours in to get their license and stuff, so. I guess the, uh, yeah, we could table it, but the faster we prove it, the better. I think either one would be fine, personally, but.
My only concern would be with the, the Trax, and that's just with the turbo engine. And the only reason I have concern about that is I recently, this summer, went through a new car, new to me at least, car purchasing journey. Um, and a lot of, like, both my brother who's a mechanic and a lot of my friends who are mechanics and my mechanic, all suggested to try to just stay away from turbo engines because there usually are a lot of repairs that need to be done. Like, they're, they're just very prone to things going out on them. So that was my only thing, is if we're trying to keep the cost of repairs down, a turbo engine may not be the one you wanna go with.
Do they have some others, some, does Minnesota Motors have a different vehicle then?
Maybe.
That's what they offered.
This is what they offered.
I think if you look at the miscellaneous and you see a backup camera and a lane departure feature on the Toyota Corolla, which are designated for driver's ed, I think that would be more of a safer option for the students. Because you, you're looking at the Chevy Trax, but you don't have what the Toyota Corolla has when it comes to the students. A heating steering wheel, heated mirrors, okay, but what's gonna benefit the student when they're driving the car?
And the gas mileage is better too.
And, yeah, I was gonna say, the, the gas mileage is way better on that as well. And if we're in a time crunch here, and we have to benefit the student here, especially if they're canceling driver's ed, so, or the, um, behind the wheel. I think we should vote on it.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion, um, just, and then we can, um, discuss it a little bit further if there's anything more to discuss, so.
I'll make a motion that we purchased the Quality Toyota vehicle, it is the lowest bid and has the, the most options.
Alright. Second that.
Good, any other discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Alright. And then, um, uh, next item, looking for a motion to, um, endorse the Adams and Cleveland warranty roof replacement, um, which will cost approximately three hundred fifty thousand, four hundred thousand dollars, so. Is there a motion to engage in that roof replacement contract?
I'll move.
Alright.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? This has been an ongoing management issue and, um, Superintendent, you feel like you've got the good information on how to proceed?
We did, we spent a lot of time doing our due diligence on it, um, and I feel confident that this is a good solution long-term for the district.
What was the final say? Is this in the contract then, that we were responsible for that?
So, it's, well, I'll give a little history here. So, uh, Trumpco back in, let's say around twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, did some roof work on, uh, both Adams, um, and Cleveland. Um, they, they basically did a, um, they have a membrane that they put over top of some existing structure. Uh, and in the, uh, years after that, uh, we've had a number of roof leaks out there. Uh, both of those roofs are still under warranty, however, um, the warranty, um, is limited to no more than the original cost of the work done, and so since that time, uh, the cost of roof replacements has gone up significantly. And the thing, feeling was that, uh, true mitigation to solve the problems long-term is not to continue to patch the tears that have been happening, but to really just tear it all the way down, um, to the insulation and put a brand-new roof over those sections. So a totally different process, different solution than what had been done, um, you know, eight, ten years ago. And so, uh, we also, during that process, got a quote from Buttweilers, uh, who's done other work, uh, from us, uh, to do equivalent. Uh, their, uh, costs are actually more expensive, uh, to do the work, uh, because Trumpco, as part of the warranty, has cut the cost of, uh, of this project. Uh, they are saying that we are getting essentially a one, one point two million dollars plus in service, um, on this roof, and we're paying for a portion of the, of the cost of installation. Uh, so, uh, talking to Lakes Country Service, reached out to some of the other districts that had used Trumpco, uh, and have been very pleased, so we got that feedback. Uh, and then I had reached out to, um, a contractor, uh, construction manager, uh, that the district's very familiar with, for feedback on, uh, those Trumpco roofs as well, and that came back positive. So that's what's brought us to this point. With the reminder to everyone involved, uh, as we were reminded, warranties are not written on behalf of the purchaser or client. They are written on behalf of the company issuing them, so.
My, that one, my refrigerator. Any, um, other discussion or questions on, uh, contract for the roof repairs? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Alright, that's approved, and, um, and that concludes our regular board meeting. We'll have our last early morning summer meeting on Monday, um, August twenty-fifth at seven fifteen. And we'll follow with a guest speaker and, uh, work session for crisis protocols. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Alright, we are adjourned, thank you.